Hi everyone, I'm John Schulte, pastor of Christian Education and Discipleship. And I'm glad you're joining me for this third study on 2 Timothy. It's part of a, as many of you know, because you've been following me through all of this series on the pastoral epistles. It's part of that series. We started out with 1 Timothy, then we went to the book of Titus, and then now we're back to 2 Timothy, and we're jumping into the second chapter. If you haven't been with us through this whole series, then you can go onto our online class platform. I'll throw the address up on the screen there for you. And you know, follow along and catch 1 Timothy and Titus, catch up to us in that. And then later, when we complete the 2 Timothy, we'll throw that one up there too. And that way, you can go through the whole series. And on our online classes, invite a friend to join you or tell them about it. So that they can go online and take both the 1 Timothy and Titus studies as well as 2 Timothy. And if you haven't gotten, if this is your first time with us and you haven't gotten the other one, the other two sessions that we've done in 2 Timothy, they are on our YouTube channel for now. They'll be there, and then later we'll move them to our online platform. So there's a lot of different ways you can catch up, be a part of it. But we're just glad you're here on this Sunday morning. And I hope that you're enjoying this study as much as I am. Lots of good things we're going to cover today. We'll see if we can get through this whole second chapter of Timothy, beginning in verse 14. We left off starting with verse 14, chapter 2. And I think we'll just dive right in. There's going to be a lot of good stuff today. So, chapter 2, verse 14 says, "Remind them of these things, and solemnly charge them in the presence of God not to wrangle about words, which is useless and leads to the ruin of the hearers." Verse 14, yeah, a lot of good stuff in that one. Remind them of these things. Well, now, you know, Paul has been basically talking about, talking directly to Timothy and dealing with some of Timothy's apprehension in his ministry there in Ephesus. But now, he's going to kind of change over a little bit and not just talk to Timothy, but generally to everyone in the church there. And so he talks, you know, he says to Timothy, "Remind them of these things." It's the people there, the leadership and the people there. "And solemnly charge them in the presence of God not to wrangle about words." And we know, and I underline that because we know even, and you can check out the first study we had in 1 Timothy, that was a big issue in the church. They were talking about things, people were teaching things that were not biblical. They were teaching things about the Jewish law that no longer counted since Christ had been, you know, been on earth and instituted a new covenant. So there was a lot of this discussion stuff that didn't really matter, didn't count, and wasn't really important to what they were there for. And we heard really in 1 Timothy that the reason they were there was to reach people, to evangelize people in that city and reach them for Christ and make them fully devoted followers of Christ. And so that's what they really needed to be talking about. How can we do that? Churches need to be talking about that more than all kinds of crazy gossip, you know, things that don't even relate to scriptures and so forth. And this church seems to have been caught up quite a bit in that. Because here he is in the second letter to Timothy, still talking about it. It's still an issue, and this is like four or five years later. So, you know, that was a real problem. And he says, "When you just wrangle about words," when you're discussing things that aren't that important, he goes on to say, "which is useless and leads to the ruin of the hearers." And I underline that word "ruin" because that's a Greek word that we find being used for Sodom and Gomorrah in the Old Testament, which I thought was really kind of interesting. It describes that sense of destruction. And it holds with it, and remember, these Greek words often have meanings a little deeper than just our English words. This Greek word for ruin also means to overturn or overthrow. And so, you know, leads to the overthrowing of scripture, you know, leads to the ruin of scripture, like Sodom and Gomorrah, the destruction of. It brings about, there's a sense there that it brings about a spiritual catastrophe. It doesn't, it doesn't lead to spiritual growth, for sure. And it probably will end up destroying people's lives. This is, this is such an important issue for us today. An important issue for the church around the world, really. You know, the church with a capital C, not just our church, RB Community Church, but churches around the world struggling with this. Struggling to be concerned and mixed up in things that don't really matter, that just really lead to a spiritual disaster in people's lives. How many, how many people are out in the world today who've been involved in a church at one time or other, but because of just the, you know, soap opera stuff that happens, have decided, "That's it. I don't want to be a part of that," and they leave the church? Isn't that, that's horrible. And yet, there are many, many people who no longer go to church, not because they don't believe, but simply because they're so tired of all of the drama that happens in churches. And boy, I'll tell you, you know, this church in Ephesus had its share of drama. Now, it's been going on for four or five years. And I'll tell you, I think Timothy has had enough of that. And there's been plenty of leadership in churches that have left because they just were so fed up with, with this kind of drama. It brings about ruin. So of course, Paul is saying, "Don't let that happen here." And as he said before, you know. And here's another thing, in verse 15, you know, we begin to see where he, he has talked about this before in 1 Timothy 15. "Be diligent to present yourselves approved to God as a workman, who does not need to be ashamed, accurately handling the Word of Truth." And that "be diligent" has that zealous persistence in it. The sense that Greek word has a sense of zealous persistence in accomplishing a goal. Goes along with what he talked about before and earlier in the chapter, where he was giving a metaphor for the Christian life. And he was saying, "Hey, be like a soldier, or be like an athlete, or be like a hard-working farmer." You'll see that in chapter 2, verses 4, 5, and 6. You know, that's the kind of persistence and zealousness that you need here. And that's what he's talking about. And that was, of course, also an underlying theme of 1 Timothy. To be zealous for the Word, to be diligent, to, you know, to really pursue with, you know, with focus what we need to be about, not getting lost in all the other things. And I think that is really good advice, not only for the church in Ephesus and for Timothy, but for all of us to be reminded. You know, are we really zealous for what the Word is teaching us? Are we really zealous to be focused on reaching people for Christ? Are we really zealous for developing and disciplining them along in their relationship to Christ? Yeah, that, I think that's the, you know, that's the important thing. That's what we really need to be focused on, not on anything else. And then, so presenting yourself as to God as a workman, who does not need to be ashamed, accurately handling, and I underline that too, along with being diligent, accurately handling the Word of Truth, God's Word. How can we accurately handle that? And it's interesting, here is another metaphor. God is a, you know, to show yourself approved of God as a workman. He's, he's going down to the blue-collar positions and saying, "Hey, man, we gotta be like them. We gotta be into, you know, the workman idea of hard laborious work." And he knows about that. Because accurately handling, he uses a tradesman word there in the Greek, which really means cutting, precisely cutting, or cutting it straight in like leatherworking or tent making. Huh. Well, that's interesting because Paul was a tent maker. And so he knew that trade. That's what he did for a living. You know, he went around and cut leather and, you know, created tents and so forth. And so he knew that, and that's how he paid for his, being able to do the ministry that he did and to be able to travel like he did. And so he's using that kind of concept, accurately handling or, you know, cutting it straight, being precise about things, you know, and he's using that trades language, carpentry, masonry, of course, Paul's own, being precise and accurate, how important that is. Because we know if we're not being precise and accurate with what the Word is teaching, and I pray that I can be that same way as I teach you here in these classes, so that it won't move to spiritual ruin. It will stay to being exactly what it needs to be, which is the, you know, milk and then meat of the Word that helps us grow in our faith. And that's my prayer for this class. That's my prayer for these studies, this whole series on the pastoral epistles, that we all grow, including myself, that we all grow in God's Word, that we all, our disciple along in our walk with the Lord. And, you know, it's a maturity factor for our church as well as all churches, right? And that's what we want. So that's my prayer. You know, it's kind of like every time I go to work, you know, and I'm ready to serve in ministry, my prayer is simply this, "Lord, could you get me out of the way?" You know, all my problems and issues, don't let them be caught up in my work. But help me to follow you, help me to see what your spirit is doing. Let me see the gifts that people have around me and help me to, to make them, you know, stand out and to bring their gifts to the forefront. It's not about me, help me stand away and not get in the way of the ministry that you're trying to do. So accurately handling that Word of Truth is so, so important. And he gets into more of that in verse 16. "But avoid worldly and empty chatter, for it will lead to further ungodliness." And we'll see that idea as we saw in 1 Timothy, there's that undercurrent too in there, you know, of holiness, the pursuit to be holy. And here again is Paul's thought. You know, there's a sense of holiness that you have to have in your life to be a disciple of the Lord and to grow in your discipleship, and you've got to get that in there. And, you know, it's done primarily by hearing a word, the word that has been handled accurately. But it also means you have to avoid the worldly and empty chatter that you hear. I think that's such a descriptive way of writing, you know. Hey, that's just empty chatter. Don't, don't get caught up in that. Boy, I'll tell you, it seems to be harder and harder for people to be able to do that, for all of us to be able to do that in this social, you know, world. Because I think a lot of the social media is pretty much just empty chatter and worldly chatter. Just, you know, and so it's so easy. It's easier now than ever to get caught up in those things. And where does it lead? It just leads to further ungodliness. It doesn't develop you as a disciple of Christ. It doesn't lead you closer to the Lord. All that stuff just leads you farther away. And part of spiritual maturity is discerning that, is realizing that. Yeah, I don't want to get caught up into that. I just, you know, want to draw myself closer to God. And I got to spend more time in the Word and more time in my personal devotions so that I'm not spending all that time on, on social media. I was talking to a friend the other day, and she was saying, you know, "Social media can be so consuming, and I just try to just spend maybe half an hour in it in the morning, looking at some things, catching up, and then maybe in the evening, and that's it. I just don't even look at it between those times." And maybe we just have to get to that point. And, and one of that is, boy, if I can spend 30 minutes or, you know, in the morning, 30 minutes in the evening, that's an hour of time on social media, maybe I can, you know, think about doing more of, you know, in God's Word than that, you know. So maybe more than an hour, maybe I have to spend more than 30 minutes in the morning in God's Word or listening to a message or, you know, participating in a Bible study like this or whatever, just to get that in my mind and clear out all that empty chatter that only leads to ungodliness. I'll just get rid of that. So something good to think about there, isn't it? Verse 17, "And their talk will spread like gangrene." Among them are Harmonius and Philitis. Oh, Harmonius and Philitis, boy, two guys, again, Paul lists two guys that, that are, verse 18, "Men who had gone astray from the truth, saying that the resurrection had already taken place, and they upset the faith of some." He's giving an illustration of this empty chatter, you know, of all the stuff we've, we've talked about, people who weren't accurately handling the Word of Truth, who weren't diligent with their faith. These two guys were leading people astray. They had said that, you know, "No, there's not going to be a resurrection of the dead at the end." That happened already, you know, with Christ. So we've basically, life is lived, you know, without any sense of eternal life. What, that's, you know, horrible. And some people were very upset by hearing that, you know. And what was the end result of their faith? Well, part of the end result of our faith is the fact that we're going to receive eternal life. And that is a true statement, but these guys were teaching against it. And what was happening when they were teaching against that in the church? And how, how serious it must have been that Paul actually names the two guys that were doing it because it was like gangrene? Well, that's self-explanatory, you know. We don't have to go too far into understanding that. It's spreading like gangrene. It's eating up. It's like a cancer. It's horrible stuff. It's destroying the church, and how horrible that is. And leading people, you know, astray, so that it upsets the faith, and we certainly don't want to do that. And then verse 19, "Nevertheless, the firm foundation of God stands, having this seal. The Lord knows those who are His, and everyone who names the name of the Lord is to abstain from wickedness." And I underlined "firm foundation" and "seal." Very interesting language that Paul is using right here. It's very reflective of the church and sacraments. Because we talk about the church as being that firm foundation. Jesus certainly said, you know, "On this rock I will build my church," that firm foundation. So here we have, "Nevertheless, the firm foundation, the church of God stands." And, you know, it may seem sometimes, and I know I feel this way at times, and maybe you do too. When you look at society today and you think, oh, you know, nobody takes the church seriously. Nobody thinks about spiritual things anymore. You know, our, our society is moving to this, this, you know, totally secular life. And maybe the church doesn't have the influence it used to have. And maybe it's dying out. I've heard that, you know. How relevant is the church? I've heard people saying that over and over again. And that was kind of the thought and experience too here, even in this time of Paul. But Paul says, "Nevertheless, all this stuff going on, don't worry. The firm foundation of God stands. The church will stand against this." And, you know, this is kind of part of eschatology in the end times, where the church will look like it's insignificant. But remember, salvation will come through it. Salvation will come through it. It is the kingdom of God at hand. And it is because the church is in the world, people don't realize this. People don't always think about it. But it is with the church in the world today, it is because the church is in the world today that this world does not go to hell in a handbasket, doesn't fall apart. It's because the presence of God's kingdom is even here now, and it will fully come when the Lord returns. And that will be the consummation of the age, you know. But until that time, don't give up on the church. Don't buy into the idea of what it looks like on the surface. Because underneath is this firm foundation that will stand up against the gates of hell. And you will see that that's the way it is. And then, "Having this seal," now, isn't that interesting? Well, what is our seal? What is our sign and seal? That's our sacraments, of course, the Lord's Supper and Baptism. And they are a sign to us of this kingdom, of this foundation of the church, and a seal in our conscience, a seal that comes both in all of our senses. We can taste, feel, see, experience it. And like a miracle, like God worked these miracles where people could actually see the kingdom of God at hand. So it is in our sacraments that every time we participate in the Lord's Supper or Baptism, we are experiencing the kingdom of God in a very tangible way. And it seals upon our mind that the church is a firm foundation and it hasn't gone away. And it won't go away. And hell will not overcome, and go back to 1 John, right? Or the first chapter of the Gospel of John, which so beautifully tells us that this darkness will not comprehend it. It won't overcome the light. And that's a beautiful passage there too. And it goes along with what's being said here. And so here it is, "The Lord knows those who are His, and everyone whose names the name of the Lord is abstained from wickedness." And the idea of abstain from wickedness, the idea again, another underlying current, just like it was in the first book, now here it is in the second, the pursuit of holiness, you know, to be holy. If you want, you know, if you're naming the Lord, for as for me and my house, you know, we will serve the Lord. Okay, then if we're going to do that, then we have to pursue holiness. That has to be the focus, not everything, not all the other stuff, you know, that we see people pursuing in the world today. Verse 20, "Now in a large house there are not only gold and silver vessels, but also vessels of wood and of earth and ware, and some to honor and some to dishonor." Good metaphor going here, and then he continues in 21, we'll continue there. "Therefore, if anyone cleanses himself from these things, he will be a vessel for honor, sanctified, useful to the master, prepared for every good work." Now, that's interesting because he says, "All right, you've got some utensils in the house that are made of gold and silver. Those are the kinds of things you bring out when the guests come over or you have a great party. But there are also things in the house that are done, that are made from earthenware or just, you know, wood that are done for just the, the basic necessities of cleaning, removing waste, you know, throwing away the garbage, all that kind of stuff." And so now, this is interesting because Paul puts us in the wood and earthenware, not, not in the gold and silver. We'd like to think of ourselves as vessels of gold and silver. But he says, "Well, now, look at this. If anyone cleanses himself from these things..." And so he's, he's talking about the wood and earthenware, the, the stuff of dishonor, the stuff that was there for taking out the waste, you know. Okay, that's who we are, you know. "But, but then if anyone cleanses himself..." Okay, we're talking about the righteousness that comes through Christ. This is a wonderful, just little piece of gospel message here, all right. "From these things, he will be a vessel for honor, sanctified," all right, which is what we are, right? We're just that earth and, you know, earthenware and wood and so forth. But we have been sanctified by Christ. And because we have, we have now honor. And we are a vessel, useful to the master, prepared for every good work. Now we have an honorable work to do, and that's wonderful. Don't forget that. You were sanctified by the Lord. You may have been of dishonor at one time, but not today. Because of the Lord Jesus, you now have an honorable work to do. You are useful to the master. What a blessing that is. We're useful to the master. And Lord, that should be our prayer, right? Every, every morning we get up, "Help me to be useful to you, Lord. You know, help me to show my gratitude and thanksgiving for the sanctification that you brought to my life through Jesus Christ." And that needs to be our focus and prayer. And he's just reminding Timothy of that, and to remind, you know, his leadership of that. Verse 22, "Now flee from youthful lusts and pursue righteousness, faith, love, and peace with those who call on the Lord from a pure heart." Yeah, join the church, you know, join, join all those who are of like mind to want to serve the master, to be, oh, one time we were earthen vessels, you know. But today, we are that special vessel set upon, sanctified by Christ, to be used for the master. And I want to be with those people and all that group of people while, well, they're out there pursuing righteousness and faith and love and peace, you know. We're, we're trying to get away from the youthful lusts, you know. But to remember the call on the Lord from a pure heart, to remember to call on Him. "Give us this pure heart, Lord. May it be ours." "Oh, how can a young man be pure?" We hear in Psalm 119, right? You know, how can that be? Well, we have to call upon the Lord so that we can have His righteousness. And so the Holy Spirit will move among us and will live that sanctified life. 23, "But refuse foolish and ignorant speculations, knowing that they are, that they produce quarrels." You know, how wise that is again. Be, you know, discerning, understand. When you're in the Word and you're pursuing these things, you call upon God for a pure heart, you're, you're in His Word, you remember that you're sanctified, you know, all of these things that he's talked about that, you get that gift of discernment. You have that understanding of realizing what's really important and what's not. You don't get stuck in ignorant speculations, but, you know, because you know, they only produce quarrels. You'll be able to figure it out when you're walking with the Lord. The closer you are with the Lord, the better you'll figure it out. 24, "The Lord's bond servants must not be quarrelsome, but be kind to all, able to teach, patient when wronged." Yeah, how wonderful that is. That is a byproduct of the fact that you've been walking with the Lord. You'll be able to not become quarrelsome, but to be able to be kind to all people, able to teach, impatient when wronged, because you've been with the Lord and your life has been changed by the Lord. 25, "With gentleness correcting those who are in opposition, and if perhaps God may grant them repentance, leading to the knowledge of the truth." Doesn't mean we have to accept all things or say that all things are good. We can gentle and with love though, be direct and point out those areas that are not scriptural, not based in God's Word, that won't help us, you know, that have been quarrelsome or whatever else, all these things that he's listed here, that bring dishonor. No, no, I can call those into question. There's nothing wrong with that. Yes, the scripture will bring to bear a judgment against those things. We live in a world where people say, "You don't judge me. Don't judge me. I don't have to judge you. I'm sharing the gospel with you." If you feel convicted by that, good. That's the Holy Spirit talking. And hopefully, as he writes here, you know, if we do that, "with gentleness correct, those who are in opposition, if perhaps God may grant them," hopefully, God will grant them repentance. When they feel that conviction, hopefully, they'll repent from that, leading to the knowledge of the truth. Yeah, so we have a responsibility of honestly teaching the Word, no matter of it. If people feel, you know, that, "Oh, he's judging me," or whatever, you know. If you feel that conviction, repent, come back, and then know the knowledge of the truth. And they, and then verse 26, "And they may come to their senses and escape." You know, there's just, like you're being freed. You escaped out of this prison from the snare of the devil, having been held captive by him to do his will. And wow, you know, how many people today don't even realize it? They're in captivity to the devil. And they need to be sprung free. They need to escape. And we pray that the Lord will, you know, get through all of the cloudiness of their vision, get through all of the clothing. vision, get through all of the closed-mindedness, and begin to see what the truth is. May God grant them repentance, leading to the knowledge of the truth. That's our prayer for our community and for our society and our world today. And that was Paul's prayer for Timothy and for that church there, as it is for our church as well. All right, I think that covers a lot of good territory in about 30 minutes, and I'm glad you're with me. Wow, such great stuff. Then he's gonna go into chapter three next time. Paul talks about perilous times and perilous men. I think that'll be interesting, and I invite you to join me and to invite others to join me in the process. I'll see you there.